Good evening, we're going to call this meeting in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Good evening, we're going to call this meeting in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I move to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The secretary will call role.
Commissioner Hodge.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rice.
Here.
Chairperson Tolson.
Here. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Hodge and second by Commissioner Gray. Unless there are any objections, the agenda stands approved. The secretary will read the declaration of conflict.
If any member of the planning commission may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Hearing none, we'll proceed. Public statements, this is the time allotted for public statements or comments on all items other than public hearing items, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to be heard? Doesn't seem like there is, is there any correspondence from the deputy director, city attorney?
No.
No correspondence.
Further from the city attorney.
No correspondence, great. Our consent calendar. May I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
If I may, on the consent calendar. On page two of the consent calendar. On article two, section one. It says, in the event of absence of both the chairperson and vice chairperson, the remaining members shall select a chairperson pro tempore. I would like to suggest that that should change to, in the event of the absence of both the chairperson and the vice chairperson, the remaining members, or the remaining. That the, sorry. That the chairperson pro tempore should be the ranking member. To make it so that it's not a political thing, that it's just.
Seniority.
Seniority.
You can do that.
I'm okay, if you're not okay with it, that's whatever, I was just throwing that out there.
Ranking as in time on the planning commission.
Time on the planning commission, either way, I'm fine with it.
Anybody against that?
Well, you have an issue of whether or not there could be two people who have been on at the same exact time, so you're going to have to either have the ranking member or, and if there, and if there is no ranking member, then you can do it by selection.
Correct.
So, additional wording, so not just ranking member?
Yeah, I think it'd be written up that way, so, you know, ranking member, if there is one, if not, then by selection, by the remaining members.
I think, I think we have that recorded and we can do it as amended.
Perfect.
By my recollection, in the last 12 years, that's happened exactly once.
Okay.
Okay.
We're planning for the future.
Okay.
Just in case. So, that is, any other discussions on that item? So, we need to have a motion for approval as amended.
I move to approve as amended.
Second.
Perfect, we've got a. Motion by Commissioner Gray and second by Commissioner Hodge. Do we need to call for a vote on that, or just?
That's fine.
Unless there's any other discussion or objections, the consent, or that motion is moved, is approved, excuse me. We've got new business. Is that? Can we read that? Yes. 1181 is recommended for continuance to January 4th?
Yes, that is staff's recommendation.
Is there anyone in the chambers that has a problem with that, otherwise? Anybody on the dais that's got a problem continuing that to January 4th? So, moved. We have other items. Confirming the 2023 commission meeting dates, is that listed?
Yep. Are we on the 2023 commission dates?
Yes.
I have a few things, Chairperson.
Okay.
February 20, or excuse me, February 22nd is Ash Wednesday. I don't know, that's, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't know if somebody else might. March 22nd is the beginning of Ramadan, I don't have a problem with that, but somebody else might.
Which date?
March 22nd. April 5th is a Passover, and. That's not such a big deal for me, but I do know some people that that would be an issue, so. April 5th, I'm sorry. And so, I would like to see the, at the minimum, I would like to see the April 5th date be moved to April 12th. And also, the November date, November 22nd, I would like to see that moved. Either to November 15th or November 29th. Instead of the day before Thanksgiving.
And Commissioner, Vice Chair Rice, the, on page two of that report, it suggests November revisions are the 1st and the 15th. Page two.
Okay, I would go with that.
Should the commission agree to that?
I would go with that.
I.
For November, that would be great.
Yeah, the November recommendation is for November. 1 and November 15th to allow that two-week separation.
Okay, that would work. And then just move.
April 5th to the 12th?
April 5th to the 12, well, then maybe we should do April 12th and then 26th. So that there's a two-week separation, is that what you would suggest?
That would be favorable.
Okay.
April 12th and 26th?
As well as the February and the March, because those don't compete on those dates that you were referring to. February 1st and 15th, and then the March 15th, 1st, 15th and 29th.
Commissioner Gray, we may have an item scheduled already for February 8th, it's already in the loop that we may have to notify.
I was referring to the 22nd specifically. That was mentioned by Commissioner Rice.
Are you talking February 22nd?
Correct.
Yeah, moving that, because if you got something on the, if that's an issue on February 22nd and then March 22nd.
Could try March 1st as a. Instead of February 22nd, if the commission desires.
Well, what about February 29th?
You mean March 29th?
February 29th.
Yeah, forego the February 22nd meeting because of Ash Wednesday, just make it on, oh, sorry. I'm looking at the wrong date here.
It'd be.
March 1st.
It would be March 1st.
So, let's, let's change February 22nd to March 1st.
And then March 22nd?
To March 29th?
29th, that would give more separation.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, for Thanksgiving, we're talking about keeping November 8th.
1st and 15th.
1st and 15th.
1st and 15th, okay, and then, I just have a concern about December 22nd, if that's going to be 27th, sorry. December 27th, that's going to be an alternate, because that is typically in between holidays that a lot of people are going to be. I know it's an alternate date, but I think it's a date that we may not want to consider, considering it's in between holidays and a lot of people are on vacation.
But the 6th and 20th would be okay, right, yeah?
There you go.
And usually on those alternate dates, we reach out to the commissioner, should there be an odd situation, they may happen to be available, so we do leave it on that, but we usually don't try to have meetings that week.
Fantastic, so we've made the notations and changes, thank you, Vice Chair Rice. Okay, let's see here. Informational presentation. Oh. We need a motion to approve those dates for next year.
I move to approve the dates for next year, as amended.
Second, you have a second?
Sec.
Beautiful, we have a motion to approve the dates as amended by Commissioner Gray and second by Vice Chair Rice, if there's any other objections, otherwise it's approved. Do we have an informational presentation by Envision today?
Yes, Chairman Tolson, we'll have that presentation briefly.
Okay. Who's doing that presentation?
Perhaps we should take a five-minute recess while, Ms.
Oh, gotcha. Five-minute recess. Tell me, how close are you to being ready?
I am ready now.
Okay. We're going to forego the five minutes and we're going to. Can reconvene on 6:42. We'll now hear a informational presentation on Envision Semin Valley Specific Plan Project.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Tolson, members of the planning commission, our project manager and principal planner Claudia Pedrosa will provide a presentation on the city's Envision Semin Valley project, which is an exciting re-envisioning of the Los Angeles and Tappo Street areas, as part of a SB2 grant we received to improve housing and community walkability, things of that nature, so I'll turn it over to Claudia.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the planning commission, tonight's presentation will be an overview of the Envision Semin Valley project. Envision Semin Valley is funded by two state grants, the LEAP and SB2 grants. The grants are to help the city promote more housing opportunities via a study of a specific plan that includes the Los Angeles Avenue area and the Tappo Street area. The ultimate goal is for the city to establish policies and regulations that will encourage the construction of new housing, attract new businesses, and increase the quality of life in Semin. This informational presentation has been shown to all four neighborhood councils, council in aging, and multiple outreach events, and we presented to the Chamber of Commerce this Friday. As you see in this quarterly calendar, we have gathered existing conditions, information, and feedback over here, the beginning of 2022. We gathered the feedback from residents and are in the process of putting together the draft specific plans and objective design standards. The objective design standards will provide specific regulations that are more objective instead of subjective, that would apply to the new specific plan and later on to other areas. The zoning code will be updated to reflect these standards and ultimately will help in the review of new projects and will also comply with the latest state requirements. The goals of the project. Include. Include the creating a sense of place, implement focused growth, repurpose underutilized properties, foster transit use, incentivize production of housing, also improve connectivity to key destinations, to making sure that people can walk from place to place, accommodate all transportation modes, including bike, bus, and walking, create outdoor recreational opportunities like pocket parks or green spaces and plazas, and has a public realment streetscape, making sure the sidewalks are nice and wide and have shading to protect against the sun, and also adopt innovative parking strategies to make sure that we have enough parking spaces. One of the areas that the specific plan is includes is the Los Angeles Avenue corridor between Sinaloa to Erida Road. The majority of this area allows mixed-use development and contains mostly retail uses. This area will include the Mountain Gate Plaza, Semin Valley Shopping Center, the State or Brothers Market area, and also with the Smart and Final Shopping Center. These are the existing conditions of this portion of LA Avenue. As you can see, the streetscape includes shopping centers with parking lots, fronting the street, doors, front-loaded towards the street, and the sidewalks are narrower, not conducive to connectivity to other uses. The other component of the specific plan is the Tappo Street area, which encompasses from Alamo Street to the north down to LA Avenue to the south, and some other properties on the east. This area is mostly commercial and includes Santa Susana Shopping Center, the Alamo-Tappo project that is under construction, the transit station including MetroLink, lined industrial buildings in this area, and also the park and rec center that is nearby. The majority of this area permits mixed-use development. This slide shows two recently approved projects, the Santa Susana Mixed Use Project, which was approved earlier this year with 280 residential units, and the Tappo-Alamo Mixed Use Project, which is under construction right now. These pictures show the current streetscape on Tappo Street, here we also have parking lots fronting the street. And however, Tappo Street does have some improvements as decorative lighting and trees. The idea is to improve the public realm in order to promote connectivity between uses and activate these areas. So, what is in the specific plan? Aside from implementing the general plan, this set sets a plan in place for the next few decades that include a community-based vision. With this, new codes and regulations will be established, will be helped streamline project review. The specific plan will be reviewed by the planning commission as sitting council at a later date. However, the specific plan will not dictate what building goes where, force property owners to redevelop their land, or require buildings to be torn down. Also, the specific plan cannot reduce the parcel's permissible housing density unless the loss is made up somewhere else. Most of the project areas are within the mixed-use overlay zone, which allows higher densities and building height, and requires a combination of residential and commercial uses on the property. Generally, ground floor space is to be used for commercial purposes to help activate the street. As I mentioned earlier, we have presented to four public outreach events, to the neighborhood councils and to the council in aging. Overall, this is some of the feedback that we have received regarding amenities and land uses. As you can see on this table, most people prefer sit-down restaurants, would like to have breweries, more community space, provide also senior housing, recreation for older kids and teenagers, and also more indoor physical activity areas. Likewise, when asked about the building scale that they felt most comfortable with, people commented on low and medium-high type of buildings, from one to four stories high, but not taller than that. These are some examples of massing, don't worry about the architecture, it's just examples of massing. On the upper part, we have one to three stories, and the lower part, we have four to seven stories. In addition, in addition, people were very favorable of providing more streetscape amenities such as protected bike lanes, like we see. Like we see here. Curbs have improvements, curb extensions, pedestrians path, there are wider sidewalks, and also some pocket parks. Like I mentioned earlier, we are wrapping up the public outreach component on this project and are gearing towards preparation of the draft documents. We encourage you to submit your comments to envisionsemivalley.com or talk to staff. This concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions.
Any questions for Ms. Pedrosa? Beautiful, thank you very much.
I do, I'm so sorry. On the bike lanes, because I know that I think it's in our general plan, is that they're still indicating, or we still have it indicated, that bike lanes and paint painting areas is still considered experimental, is that something that is still considered experimental, or would be talking about painting? Because the bike lanes with the green that you see in other cities.
I don't think we have a decision as of yet of how it's going to be handled, because one of the comments that we received was that they, people wanted to have protected bike lanes, which changes the street layout, including actually adding bike lanes would also change the layout, so we still are in the process of putting that together.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Fantastic. Now, we're going to go to oral communications and reports. I think this might be two of our planning commissioners' last meeting, Commissioners Gray and Hodge. Anything you want to share with us, last parting words, thank you for your service. Commissioner Gray, ladies first?
Sure, I'll go first.
Okay.
Because there's a possibility that this is our last meeting, or my last meeting. In that eventuality, I was thinking about, about this, especially as sitting next to this man here. Nine years and 11 months ago was my first meeting, and he was sitting right there, and I wondered what he was thinking. I hope that you were thinking differently today than you were at the time. In terms of, you know, what value I add to the commission, everybody else was different, nobody else was the same here. But there was never a time when I felt more collegiality on the, on the dais. I very much appreciate the betterment of some of the things that have happened since the beginning of that times to now. I think that staff has a much better approach and cooperative approach. much better approach and um, cooperative approach to things today than, than ever I've seen. Uh, you know, in the years that I've been sitting here, and I very much appreciate, very, very much appreciate that difference in approach and the completeness of the work, and the collegiality with which um, ideas and thoughts are shared, and how everybody, you know, is hunting for the same thing. Uh, I, I do realize that there were times where I made meetings a little longer. Um, I, I hope that that was for the good, and that is a result of those efforts, that there were projects that were better. Yeah, I will, if not on the commission again, I will greatly miss the experience taking a look at, at the informational project that we just saw. Obviously, there are lots of challenges and exciting opportunities and things to come forward. For those who are, uh, will remain on the commission and those who will be added to the commission, I hope that each, each of you um, continue to dig in to these projects, continue to try to do what it is that you can do to make them better. Uh, never perfect, but better. Uh, and I, I have to tell you that there are times, and I, I hope this is the same for each of you. Right, you drive by a project and you say, I remember when that project came to us, and because of the work that we did that night, this is better. You can see some, some things. And nobody will ever know that we did it, or that you do, do it. But the people who live there, the people that work there, the people who are, uh, experienced economic betterment in the city because of the work that's done here, uh, will benefit from it, and all of us can take a sense of pride in the fact that because of that effort, um, I mean, gosh, take a look at the, the C-Train project. If that wasn't an example of the, the absolute uh, molding of staff and, and the applicant and the people that lived, you know, that area, and the work that the Planning Commission did to make improvements on that project, then nothing, nothing is. And, no, I get to drive by that project a lot, and I, I look at the ramps, and I look at the fences that would, wouldn't have been there, and, and all these things that, that uh, the commission did as a, as a group, that staff did in support of the commission, that uh, the applicant did trying to figure, find out a better project and having a good attitude about it. And I hope that you can remain consistent. By that, I mean that you, you apply the rules consistently, that you establish um, uh, an environment where, where people know what they can get from the commission, meaning what they will receive because of consistency. Uh, one of the things that I used to hear when, when I was on that side of the podium back in the 90s, and with a group called Citizens for Safe and Secure Seminole Valley, and we would come down, and we would talk about the general plan, and we would talk about density, and we would talk about all these things, and then some commi- uh, council member might say, "The general plan can mean whatever you want it to mean. I think it's a good project." I'm thinking, "It's a good project?" How is somebody supposed to base their actions and activities based upon somebody thinks it's a good project? It's not a standard. So I hope that you continue to issue uh, your, your ideas and your thoughts and your rulings and your findings based upon standards, and, and that you can't go wrong if you continue to do that and listen to people. And I hope to goodness, if I ever turn on TV, nobody calls staff Cynthia, or Si- or Michelle, or Bob, or whatever. You know, because that optics are just horrible, and they don't deserve, they deserve to be called by their, their, their professional names. Um, I hope that I've, I've um, provided a positive footprint on, on the commission. I very much appreciate the work and having the, the chance to work with each of you.
Thank you, well said. Commissioner Gray?
Well, I, I just kind of feel like I had to go after, because usually you're the one that brings up ideas that I never thought of, so um, or I hadn't completely thought all the way through, so. Um, this has been a really great experience for me. I was, you know, brought on halfway through a term, in the middle of a pandemic, and uh, being um, immunocompromised as well, is that uh, did most of my meetings, I think, on Zoom. And uh, it wasn't as scary as sitting up here for the very first time. Um, I love the consistency. I, what you said is exactly, um, but I've found that this particular planning commission has really stuck to, and it, it's been a lot of compliments that I've seen from people saying um, how the planning commission is, holds their meetings, and the in-depth research and the questioning, and sticking to um, making sure that we're not just pushing something through that just should be pushed through when there are some, maybe small little details that do make a difference. It's the people that live here in Seminole Valley. It doesn't matter if they're, they're going to be renting apartments, or if they're going to be owning um, you know, an asset. It's, it's, they're all the people of Seminole Valley that make Seminole Valley what Seminole Valley is. And if we're not growing in a smart way, um, so that we can make sure that our, hopefully, you know, planning commissions in the future will, will consider that our open spaces should stay, stay open spaces as much as possible, and if we continue to do the things so that we can develop Seminole in a smart fashion, I think that it'll just continue to be a really great city. Um, I've been blessed with um, you know, living here for, since 1994, a second home, and have really appreciated the growth and the things that have taken place, and if it's because of the planning commission on a lot of these things, then I'm really thankful for that, because um, there's a lot of things that, that could take place that go, you know, really negatively, and I also see growth in, in, you know, the, the growth that's taking place in Oxnard and Ventura um, seems really, really fast at some pace, but at the same time, whatever's happening there needs to happen with what they're doing. I just want to thank each and every one of you guys for welcoming me. Um, it's, it's been a pleasure, it's been um, challenging. Um, I paid attention to planning commission meetings in the past, never necessarily in person. And not consistently, but maybe I will in the future, because I think it really is important, and we have um, many, many times where there's not a big audience here, and yet it really affects everybody, and then they complain when, when things get changed and they, they don't necessarily like the process. So it'd be really nice to see more people participate in our planning commission meetings, and um, I'm certainly going to be dragging people along the way um, in the future, and it's, like I said, it's just been a really great pleasure, and I thank every one of you for welcoming me.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have something to report or say?
If I could just.
Please.
Couple of words here. I, I just, um, one of the things I wanted to say about Commissioner Hodge is, is that, you know, when Commissioner Hodge first came on, he drove me crazy. I, I just want to throw that out there, because, you know, he would, he would find a misspelled word, or uh, you know, and a phrase that didn't make sense, and, and we would dwell on that thing, and, you know, or, or something, and I'd think, and I'm like, "Oh my God, really? We're going to spend 15 minutes or 20 minutes on this, on this thing?" And I'm like, "Really? Is this going to make a difference in this project?" And, and I would, you know, and we'd, we'd spend all this time on it, and finally, we'd, we'd work on this thing, and we'd work on this thing, and, and, and finally, we'd come to a consensus on it, and we'd move on, and I would go home, and I would say, "Gosh, we spent all this time on it," and then eventually, I'd, I'd come around to it and go, "You know, that was really a smart thing that we did, because, you know, somewhere down the line, you know, that, that may come up again, you know, in the next project, or the next project, or the next project." And, you know, I, I really, as much as at the time, it was kind of frustrating that we spent an extra 15 minutes here, 20 minutes here, an hour sometimes on some projects and going through different things. Um, I really do appreciate the work that Commissioner Hodge put into some of these projects, and I know that he drove the staff crazy sometimes, and, and sometimes even people in the audience crazy sometimes, and some of the planning commissioners crazy sometimes. But I, I really appreciate the fact that he really strove for consistency um, in everything that he did. And, and trying to make sure that everything was fair. And, and if I had to pick a word, I would say that that's, that's the one thing that he absolutely wanted things to be is fair, and, and consistent, you know what I mean? Well, that's two words, but, but those are the things that he absolutely sought. Was fairness and consistency in everything, and, and I, I so appreciate that, and, and every planning commissioner that's been up here since I've been here has taught me something, and, and Commissioner Gray, you know, you, you've, you've had big shoes to fill, because Castleberry, being such a youngster, you know, up here, by far the youngest person, you know, there's, there's times when you came, and, and always when the newest person comes, you know, there's always that first couple of meetings where they ask a question, and you just, "Oh my God, really? You're going to ask that question?" But, you know, you've, you jumped into it pretty quick, and you just went right on through it, and you'd, you'd ask those silly questions at the beginning, but you, you, you caught on really quickly. And you just kept on going, and you, you didn't let it slow you down, and I really appreciate that, and, and you asked some really good questions, and you just kept on going, and so, you know, it's, it's sad in a sense to see you move on so quickly, you know, to be here such, such a short period of time, but I appreciate the fact that you're talking about getting more people involved, because um, that's the sad thing, is that, you know, we have this democracy, and yet so few people are involved, you know, in this part of it. So, thank you for being here, and thank you for doing your service.
Okay, I'll say a few words. I get to jump in front of you. Six years ago, when I took this um, position on the dais, I watched in amazement with Tim and his vocabulary, and many times, I'm up here asking Google the definition of some of the words Tim was using. So, if nothing else, I, I have become a, a better person. True to form, Commissioner Hodge has always wanted to play the long game. Commissioner Rice wanted to make a miter change, to say, "We would do by seniority," and right away, Commissioner Hodge jumps in, "What if we have two people that were elected the same day?" We, a lot of us play life 10 yards at a time. Commissioner Hodge is playing the whole 100-yard field, or the whole four quarters, all the way down. So it, it is amazing to watch his mind work sometimes when we're up here, and I'm looking at this little piece, and Commissioner Hodge is looking at this. So I have many a time just sat in awe and taken a step back and say, "Okay, I got to see more of the whole picture," like Commissioner Hodge does. So, I thank you very much, and hopefully, in my six years and in my future career, I will continue to play the long game and see the whole game instead of just a little bit at a time. So thank you for your wealth of knowledge, your expertise, your thoughtfulness, and your dedication. Commissioner Gray, you, you have been with us a short period of time, but you have brought an air of class and insightfulness and outside-the-box thinking. Your questions, your comments, your remarks are all on point, and it is, it's obvious that you've read the material, which is great. I think staff and everybody else here appreciates that uh, to come up with those answers and those conclusions. So thank you for your time in, on the planning commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Mann. Commissioner Hodge, I, I, I don't know that there's been a single meeting that I haven't learned from you and your insights, and I have, have, uh, I'm a better commissioner because of it. Thank you very much. And Commissioner Gray, uh, as been stated, a breath of fresh air, and um, the insights that you bring, sometimes we, we haven't seen it, seen it that way, and so to hear an, an alternative point of view is fantastic and needed. I'm going to uh, turn the time over to staff. Anything to report?
Yes, Chairman Tolson, members of the commission. Again, I, I'll keep you brief. I do want to thank the outgoing commissioners, and in fact, all the commissioners. You've made better projects, you've made better planners, so thank you very much. On other news, we have um, anticipating to cancel the December 21st Planning Commission meeting. So we expect to reconvene probably on January 4th, 2023.
Uh, Mobile Home Rent Mediation Board, does staff have anything to report?
No items.
Tree Advisory Board, does staff have anything to report?
No items tonight.
This concludes the meeting of December 7th. The next scheduled meeting will be January 4th. This meeting is adjourned.